Meeting of the City Council, come to order. Clerk will call the roll.
Counsel Delasola.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon.
Yes.
Counsel Mangan.
Yes.
Counsel Marquezzi.
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon.
Yes.
Counsel Napolitano.
Here.
Counsel Sacheta.
Here.
Counsel Sani.
Here.
Counsel Simonelli.
Present.
Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Eleven members present.
Eleven members present. You have a quorum. Please stand and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, veritable, and just as all.
If we could please just remain standing for a moment of silence. We've lost a few folks recently. Robert Edwin Melvin is a former chief of the Everett Fire Department. Melvin Peavy, who's retired captain from the fire department. And Ellen Van Delinda, who was the children's librarian over at the Parlin Library. So if we could please just remain standing for a moment of silence. I'd appreciate that. Thank you, councilors. Before we read the first item, on a happy note, we have congratulations going out to Assistant C. Solicitor Dave Rodriguez and his wife Melissa Murphy Rodriguez on the birth of a baby girl. And we have some folks in the audience I'd like to recognize. We have former alderwoman Millie Cardelo is in the audience. We have the school committee chairman Frank Pacca and school committee member Bernie Donofio. Thank you very much for being here. Welcome. And we have former counsel Sergio Canaleo here as well. Welcome. Good to see you guys. Clerk will read the first item of business.
Item number one is public participation, Mr. Chairman, Mr. President.
She'll accept the motion.
Make a motion to open public participation.
Second.
Move the second to open public participation. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You have open public participation. Do we have a sign-in list?
There's nobody on the sign-in sheet. Mr. Chairman.
Motion to close that portion of the meeting.
Before we act on the motion, is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak? At public participation? Anyone like to speak? No? All right. We'll act on the motion. All those in favor of closing public participation, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Say no. You have closed public participation. Clerk will read next item of business.
Item number one is-
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, excuse me.
Counsel DeFlorio.
We do have some people in the audience, so if we could take items, suspend the rules and take item number eight off the agenda. Is it eight? Wait a minute. I'm sorry.
Seven and ten, I think.
Item seven and ten.
Okay. Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
It's been moved and second to suspend the rules and take items seven and ten from the calendar. Clerk will read items seven and ten.
Item number seven is the Committee Report, Committee on Legislative Affairs Report that Representative for Mayor's Office of Representative ISD appeared to an ex City Council meeting to discuss implementation of new snow removal, ordinance snow removal in general and pothole repairs.
On item seven, grant further time?
It's moved and second to accept the committee report and grant further time. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You have granted further time. Clerk, did you read that?
Item number ten. Item number ten, Committee on Government Operations, Public Safety and Service Committee report that Ms. Martin Elliott Cappas, Representative for Mayor's Office of Representative ISD, appeared in ex Government Operations, Public Safety and Service Committee relative to waste removal education.
Accept the committee report and grant further time?
Actually, I'd like to send this-
On the piece, counsel?
On the piece. I'd like to send this to ECTV and see if there's anything that they can do down there.
As opposed to granting further time? Okay. So the-
What are they response back to me?
Okay. So do we have a second on that motion?
Second.
It's been moved and second to refer this item to ECTV with a response to the sponsor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Please suspend the rules and take item number eleven.
It's been moved and second to suspend the rules and take item number eleven. All those in favor? All those opposed? Clerk will read item number eleven.
Item number eleven is an ordinance sponsored by Counsel Rosa Floria. Members of school committees shall receive an annual salary of eleven thousand five hundred dollars to take effect upon the organization of the city government following the 2015 election.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Would you like the actual ordinance, Mr.?
With, councilors, would you like the ordinance read or no?
Yes, please read the ordinance, the viewing audience.
Read ordained by the City Council of the City of Everett and by the authority of the same as follows in accordance with Article four, Section four of the Everett City Charter, Chapter seven, Section one sixty-three D of the revised ordinances of the City of Everett. I hereby amend it by striking out in its entirety and certain therein the following. Subsection D, the members of school committees shall receive an annual salary of eleven thousand five hundred dollars to take effect upon the organization of the city government following the 2015 municipal election.
Fable action on the order?
On the order, Counsel Simonelli.
Yes, I'd like to have a present a statement on, before we vote on it.
Go ahead.
Okay. I'd like to make this. It seems to me the only time the school committee come before the council is for more money. We believe their salaries are adequate for now. Also, some members of the school committee have disrespected members of our proud council, thinking that they are better than us. It's time to say no. Let them use their own budget and stop taking money away from the city budget, from our city budget and the city's free cash. It's not free no more. It's the people's money for the people. And it's not to give the school committee money anytime they come and ask for it. Thank you.
Counsel Sacheta.
Yes, I believe it was a year or two ago, school committee came before the council and the aldermen. I was on the committee. They asked for eleven thousand dollars at the time. I suggested that they receive seven thousand dollars. The council voted for eleven thousand dollars. The vote of aldermen voted against it and they got no pay raise. I believe they deserve a raise, but to give a raise of over a hundred percent when our taxes are skyrocketing in this city is not fair to the taxpayers. I would like to make an amendment to this increase, rather than eleven thousand five hundred, amend it to read nine thousand dollars, because they do deserve something. Because of myself, they didn't get the raise the last time, so I would make the amendment for nine thousand dollars. Thank you.
I would second that.
Okay, it's moved and second to amend the item to nine thousand dollars. Let me do a voice vote and if need be, we can go to a roll call. All those in favor?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. I believe that that motion has failed. The item is before you-
Just wait a while, we'll call on that. I didn't, I don't-
We can have a roll call. Clerk will call the roll. This is for an amendment for nine thousand dollars.
Counsel Delasola.
No.
Counsel DeFlorio.
No.
Counsel Hanlon.
No.
Counsel Mangan.
No.
Counsel Marquezzi.
No.
Counsel McKinnon.
No.
Counsel Napolitano.
No.
Counsel Sacheta.
Yes.
Counsel Sani. Counsel Simonelli.
Yes.
Counsel Capone.
No.
Two yays, nine nays, Mr. President.
Two yays, nine nays. That has failed. The item before you now for a roll call vote is favorable action at eleven thousand five hundred dollars.
Counsel Delasola.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon.
Yes.
Counsel Mangan.
Yes.
Counsel Marquezzi.
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon.
Yes.
Counsel Napolitano.
Yes.
Counsel Sacheta.
No.
Counsel Sani.
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli.
No.
Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Nine yays, two nays, Mr. President.
Nine yays, two nays. You have enrolled. Clerk will read the next item of business, item number one.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, we have some people in the audience. If we could please take items number five?
It's been moved and second to suspend the rules and take item number five. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's so moved. Clerk will read item number five.
Item number five is a community and business development report on petition for a second class motor deal license from new owners Paulo Delima Junior and Carlos Deica Alvo, DBA Everett Use Cars at Seventy Chelsea Street.
Fable action on the order?
Second.
It's been moved and second to accept the committee report and vote favorable action. Clerk will call the roll.
All the papers and that, everything?
Yes, with a favorable law committee recommendation. Counsel Delasola.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon.
Yes.
Counsel Mangan.
Yes.
Counsel Marquezzi.
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon.
Yes.
Counsel Napolitano.
Yes.
Counsel Sacheta.
Yes.
Counsel Sani.
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli.
Yes.
Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Eleven yays, zero nays, Mr. President.
Eleven yays, zero nays. You have granted the petition. Good luck. Clerk will read the next item of business, item number one.
Item number one is Mayor's dismissal of the FY twenty sixteen Wadisua Budget totaling sixteen million five hundred sixteen thousand six hundred and seven dollars.
Refer to the committee as a whole on the budget?
Second.
You want to refer this to the committee as a whole? So when we review it at budget time? Is that what we're looking to do?
Yes.
You can still send it to a committee on the whole.
Some to Ways and Means.
But, excuse me, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. We sent it to Ways and Means. It comes out to a budget as a whole. We're going to ask the same questions all over again.
I think that President was, thought you were sending it to budget time.
Yeah, budget time. You want to do a committee of the whole now?
That's fine.
I want to send it to the budget as a whole, yes. I believe every person should have the right to ask the questions on this book, not just four members in the committee.
Absolutely.
So that's my recommendation.
Okay. So the motion before, if I have it correctly, is to set this up to refer it to a committee of the whole?
Yes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You have referred item number one to a committee of the whole. Clerk will read next item of business, item number two.
Item two, communication regarding update on twenty sixteen capital budget plan.
Is there a-
Make a motion to refer it to the-
Dear honorable members, as you are aware in accordance with Section six dash five of the Everett City Charter, the mayor shall submit a capital improvement program to the City Council at least a hundred and twenty days before the start of each fiscal year. Unfortunately, due to the severe winter and the resources that were needed by many departments to address snow plumbing and removal, many departments were not able to submit their budgetary requests for consideration. Furthermore, we are also addressing the conditions of city equipment that have been damaged during snow removal. As such, we will be submitting the capital improvement program for the March twenty-third meeting versus the March ninth meeting. We hope this will allow us to submit the most comprehensive package possible. Thank you for your consideration and patience during this unprecedented winter. Sincerely, College Dean Maria Mayor.
Accept the communication and place on file.
Second.
Move the second, accept the communication, place on file. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You have accepted communication. Clerk will read the next item of business, item number three.
Item number three is an order sponsored by Counsel Fred Capone's presence to transfer ninety-four thousand sixty-six dollars in budgetary fund balance free cash into the following city accounts to fund salaries and expenses into the newly created office of gaming accountability and development for the remainder of the fiscal year. Salaries is sixty-seven thousand five hundred and expenses twenty-six thousand five hundred and sixty-six dollars totaling ninety-four thousand sixty-six dollars.
Make a motion to send it to Ways and Means?
Second. If I may as well from the chair, I think that in, city clerk, correct me if I'm wrong. I think pursuant to our charter, we need an administrative order. So we could refer this to Ways and Means and then they'll give the mayor's office an opportunity to put together an ordinance for the next meeting or?
Yes, an amendment to the administrative order.
All right. So the motion on the floor is to refer this to Ways and Means? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Refer it item number three to Ways and Means. Clerk will read the next item of business, item number four.
Item number four is petition for a second class motor deal license from Searl's Foreign Car Repaired, DBA Searl's Auto Sales at one oh five Broadway.
Fable action.
All the paperwork in order?
Thank you.
Move favorable action. Second on that, I'm sorry.
It's been moved and second, favorable action. Clerk will call the roll.
Counsel Delasola.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon.
Yes.
Counsel Mangan.
Yes.
Counsel Marquezzi.
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon.
Yes.
Counsel Napolitano.
Yes.
Counsel Sacheta.
Yes.
Counsel Sani.
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli.
Yes.
Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Eleven yays, zero nays, Mr. President.
Eleven yays, zero nays. You have granted the petition. Clerk will read the next item of business, item number six.
Item number six, Committee on Community and Business Development Report on Ordinance Regulating and Establishing Junk Collector's License in the City of Everett. The recommendation for favorable action is amended.
Mr. Chairman, if we have the committee report read. Do you have a committee report?
Oh, which one, John?
Item number six.
Since our members present, Counsel DeFlorio presiding, Counsel McKinnon, Hanlon, Sani and Counsel Fred Capone's executive. Committee considered an ordinance offered by Counsel Fred Capone, junk collector's license. City Clerk Michael Monarozzo is also present. Counsel Capone emailed the members copies of the proposal that showed some revisions he included that were underlined in bold. Counsel Hanlon suggested including bottles and cans into the language in Section one, Paragraph one. Counsel McKinnon questioned who would enforce a do the ticketing under the violation section in accordance with Section one dash eight of the revised ordinance of the City of Everett. Mr. Monarozzo responded it would be either the police, ISD or himself that would enforce the ordinance. Mr. Monarozzo noted that the license fee would be seventy-five dollars. Counsel Hanlon suggested additional language be included in the proposal for bottles and can pickers to ensure that no items are displaced from the containers in which they are removing the bottles and cans. Mr. Monarozzo noted that this could be a restriction the license committee could dictate during the licensing process for that particular activity. Counsel Capone agreed to provide members of the City Council with changes recommended. Committee voted to report back to the City Council a recommendation for favorable action with the amendment to include bottles and cans into language in Section one, Paragraph one.
Make a motion to accept the committee report?
Second.
It's been moved and second to accept the committee report. Counsel Hanlon?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we have this in the committee and it's a good ordinance and the few things that we had to put into it, the idea of amending it this evening would be so that it wouldn't get waylaid for another two weeks and with the, hopefully the disappearance of the snow, we're going to have the collectors starting to come around again. So it's a good chance to get this on the roll as soon as possible. So that's why we amended it and shared it out with the amendments tonight for favorable action. So I'll move favorable action on it.
Second. Counsel Marquezzi.
Yeah, just a quick question. What he said is this is aimed at pickers and like-
No, no, no.
What is this?
No, they just, in fact, that came out in committee. There seemed to be a lot of talk about the pickers. However, it's really those folks who collect junk. The state law says you shall regulate junk dealers and collectors. We've never, for some reason, licensed the junk collectors and we're supposed to.
So we're talking about regulating the junk collectors on the street?
The junk collectors, you know, they do it for a business. I've spoken to two of them and they like the fact that they would indeed be a licensed business.
Yeah, mobile businesses with trucks that go to locations and collect.
Take the metal off the sidewalks? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, you have them coming to a clean out in your house.
So you're saying like, like mobs?
Right.
Right.
They'd have to get a license?
Yes. If, yeah, if they're in every company.
All right. If they're a Chelsea company?
If they do business in Everett, they really should get one. They really should. But the state losses, we should be-
How are you going to control that?
Or they should, I'm sorry, they should be licensed in the community they're from. Say you call somebody from Chelsea, they should hold a Chelsea license.
Does this say anything whatsoever regarding, someone who does say, "I have a license to go pick scrap and I leave the truck on the street overnight"?
Yes.
Does this also prevent-
Yes, it said you cannot.
You cannot?
You cannot. That's in the language.
No, is any size truck, if it's a pickup?
You can't leave it, use, paint it, they have to have their name on it. It's a section of a cat by person, no vehicle, no vehicle wagon or motor convenience used for the collection of junk, old metals, rags, paper, or secondhand articles, which will now include bottles, cans, et cetera, shall be parked or stored on a city street or in a residential neighborhood while still containing aforementioned materials in any quantity.
So it has to be an empty truck on the street?
Absolutely empty, I guess.
Counsel McKinnon.
The reason why this came up and that we put it on the umbrella of this is that there was people that were complaining about the pickers picking in the rubbish and the overflow of rubbish, just leaving it there. That's why it came across through you, Mr. Chairman, through my colleague. But that's why it came under the umbrella of this as well. We amended it to that fact. But also, I believe that piece was submitted a couple weeks ago through the chair and we got it and we were looking at it. So if there's any amendments that need to be made to it, I would suggest that we do them now, if there is in fact any.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Mr. Chairman, something just came up that was a very good question, okay? So basically, if I hire someone, because I have junk in my cellar and I have a lot of metal, I hire someone to come and pick it up, if the person lives in Everett, they have to be licensed. But if I hire someone from Chelsea, they don't have to be licensed?
No, I think what the clerk was saying, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that if you're doing business under the state law, you're supposed to be licensed in the community which you're operating. So if you had, if you, from, so if you had a business that was outside of the city, that was located in another city, you, under state law, should be licensed by that community. Now, that community may not have a license in place, such as our situation. So what we're trying to do is we're trying to put a license in place, but it would be up to each community to follow the state law and set that up.
Do we know how many communities have this or don't have this? Do we, I'd like to lay this, I really would like to lay this on the table because-
By state law, everyone, the state law is clear. You shall license junk collectors. It doesn't say you can if you want to, you might. It says shall.
It says shall, but it says shall for every city and town, not just for the city of Everett.
Right.
So I want to know how many people adopted it, because what I'm saying is, I don't want to punish the Everett people and then recall the outside people and they get away with it. If the state-
The two I've spoken to are in favor. The two separate companies I spoke to, because now they're a licensed business and that adds value to your business.
So the licensed people in Everett that go around doing this, they're in favor of it?
The two that I spoke to, yeah, two separate ones. They said sure.
I just don't, I don't know. I don't, I don't find it fear right now.
I'm sure.
Counsel Napolitano. Oh, I'm sorry, Counsel Simonelli.
Yes.
You're next, Counsel Napolitano.
Yes, I have a question. I can see the page for the license for the guys that do the big, the big heavy stuff, seventy-five dollars. I don't believe that the trash pickers, you know, I don't think they should be seventy-five dollars also, because it's picking. I'd rather see it, if we could amend it by thirty dollars for trash pickers and, you know, because they're, I don't know how we're going to force the trash pickers anyway. I mean, they're all foreign countries and they're going to come, they don't care. But they're not going to pay the seventy-five, maybe, but maybe they'll pay the thirty.
Counsel Napolitano.
Thank you. Actually, I think this is a good idea. First of all, regardless of what other communities are involved in this, you know, if they're, if our surrounding communities are not on board with this, then we take the lead. Won't be the first time the City of Everett has. You know, it serves a couple of purposes too. First of all, I mean, one of the things we know is a big issue with seniors is unlicensed individuals going in their home representing themselves under one venue or another. And it puts a lot of people at risk. We have licensed businesses. We know who they are. There's accountability. You know, it's a win-win for everybody. If our residents are aware that our businesses are licensed at City Hall, then they don't, they can utilize these businesses without any fear of somebody coming in who they're not aware of. You know, I remember last year getting calls from a few people by different companies coming by to offer your renovations or clean this, how to clean that out. These people didn't know anything about these businesses, you know? If the businesses that are already prominent in the community are in favor of this, I think this is a good thing.
Counsel Mangan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I echo the sentiments of Counsel Napolitano. I think this is a great piece and like I said, it's, especially with the clerk that spoke to some of the businesses that actually do it. And like I said, I think it allows reputable people to go around and actually collect this stuff. So I'm totally in favor of it. Thank you.
Counsel Delasola.
I got a question. On the state law, is it, is the item I list of what items, let's say they refer to collecting, like we're saying we want to add the cans and bottles. Does the state law have that, what actually they're talking about of collecting?
Let's see what, let's see what the clerk has.
It says collecting, but doesn't say what you're collecting.
Yeah, I mean, Mr. President, it is, any secondhand article is basically what they're talking about. Anything you put out in your trash, anything that's been previously owned is a secondhand article, quite frankly.
It's a pretty big catch-all.
So you're talking, you know, when they come by and get the aluminum. Well, the cans happen to be aluminum. I mean, that's a metal. That's a metal that they-
What it comes down to is whatever you can make money off of.
Exactly.
Steel, copper, brass, cans, bottles, aluminum, whatever it is. Okay. So if the state says that I, we have to-
And one of the issues is that with unlicensed, with unlicensed individuals, some folks are getting a little aggressive and actually going on private property and taking off with stuff. So that's why we want to make sure that we know who's there, that they're identified clearly.
Yep.
And that they're licensed to interact with the people in Everett. So that's the purpose.
Will there be any way of getting a list of whoever gets their license through Everett? We could have a list of who they are. So if you see them pull up in front of your house, you know they are licensed?
Yeah, absolutely. It'd be in the clerk's office. It would be available.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Fable action on the order?
They don't have to be corporate. They can just be any-
Oh, they could be an individual. Absolutely.
Just so if they have something painted on the side of trucks. And trucks can't be on the street full of metal at night.
Right. Any other discussion? Counsel Simonelli.
President, I'd like to make a motion on that, to give the trash pickers, reduce it from seventy-five to thirty dollars. Like I said before, it's going to be hard to get their money, but I think seventy-five, they're never going to get it. So I think it's a good thing. They work hard, but maybe seventy, I mean, thirty dollars is a good price that they may be able to deal with. I'd like to make that the formal motion.
Is there a second on that motion? Counsel McKinnon.
Can we by law reduce their fee? And charge the other one a higher fee?
I don't know.
Or do they have to remain the same?
Would that entail a whole separate ordinance for, I guess?
We'd be treating them, you know, we'd be treating them differently as opposed to someone if I, say I called a company to come and pick up a bunch of cans I had.
Yeah.
Picking up the exact same thing, except I'm charging them less for a license than the other person, so.
It's not fair. Counsel Sadiq.
Just so they're aware, this piece was not to go after the pickers. We actually put it in there just because we want to hold someone accountability if they make a mess and leave it out there. But they're not going to be going out looking for bottle pickers and say, "Do you have a-" and say, "Do you have a license?" This is what we discussed in committee, that the main thing is just having a license to pick up the junk dealers. It wasn't really for the bottle pickers. So, um...
It, it through the chair if we could, please. Thank you. Thank you, Counsel. Okay. Okay. Is there a second on that motion? Move the motion? Thirty-five. A second. That's just for the pickers? Okay.
That's, that'd be for a trash picker, but how about a guy with a truck?
Counsel McKinnon.
Could we get a legal opinion on that?
Do we have anyone from the solicitor's office? We could please have the solicitor before us, I'd appreciate it.
I have a question for him.
Thanks. Colleen, thank you for being here. Have you heard the conversation or do you need to be brought up to speed?
No, I've been sitting there.
Okay. Counsel McKinnon.
I have a question for you. Um, thank you for appearing tonight. Um, the question is, can we legally, um, do this, charge seventy-five for one part of the ordinance and then thirty to another part of the ordinance?
My first inclination would say, um, no, that if it's the same license, it would have to be, um, the same fee. I don't know if you want to spend more time, two more weeks, but if you wanted to refer to my office, I can look into it a little further. Um, but I think you're just talking about businesses.
It's businesses and then, under the umbrella, it was, it was, it was businesses and then under the umbrella of it all was the bottles and cans, the people that go around picking them.
They just happened to get swept up in the net.
Yeah.
They just came in.
But you wouldn't be requiring them to have a license, just the businesses?
Both, they would both have, have license on.
You're going to have a barrel picker get a license?
From, if I may, a suggestion from the chair, if you're so inclined, perhaps we lay this on the table and give the city solicitor an opportunity to take a look at this and see if we can ferret out one from the other. It may, uh, come down to that we'd have to do a whole separate ordinance for those folks that we would consider light removal and then, uh, those folks that are in the business with the trucks, that would have to be a, a different criterion. Is that something that you think would be?
Yeah, you can refer, just, I would just ask, be specific in the referral as to exactly what we'd be looking into.
Okay, very good. Any other questions of the solicitor? Counsel DeFlorio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Colleen, in regards to the, um, the junk dealer's ordinance that was originally in front of us, okay, I think we should vote on that tonight, eliminate the bottles and, and the cans and just write a separate, a total separate ordinance for that, if that's what we want to do. But I can't see giving licenses to people that want to come and pick your bottles. I, I...
I, I unfortunately haven't had an opportunity to review the ordinance. Um, I don't know if the clerk sent it to me months ago, but, um, I actually don't recall the, the body of the, um, of the ordinance, so I can't even give you an opinion on that.
Well, we said we really didn't want to hold this up because the spring was coming. I have no problem taking out the bottles and just separating it, because I think that's the issue right now. So if we take away the bo, vote on the ordinance, which has already been in committee, and we've already discussed it in committee, so let's vote on the ordinance, eliminate the bottles and, and the cans and just write a totally different ordinance. And then that can go to committee and we can discuss it further.
If I may from the chair, I think the problem is that, um, the ordinance is written, it lists everywhere no person other than, so I think it's going to catch in everything. So rather than piecemeal it, if there's, if there's this much of a concern over it, uh, the chair would recommend that we lay it on the table, give the solicitor an opportunity to take a look at it, we'll get it cleaned up and then we can deal with it then. That, that would be a suggestion, but open to whatever the, the council would like to do. Counsel Hanlon.
Mr. Chairman, on that and, and to our city solicitor, if we had a Class A and a Class B type license in this ordinance, Class A would be thirty dollars, Class B would be seventy-five, that would be right, wouldn't it?
Sure.
Sure.
However you amend it, you can just, uh, you know, vote, vote on it as amended.
Pickers will be Class A and, uh...
Just define what the classes are.
Class B will be seventy-five dollars and Class A will be, what we said, thirty dollars, thirty dollars.
Counsel Megan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, Colleen, um, question, um, somebody comes, the people that pick the bottles and cans, unless it, if it's out on a public street or if it's in your driveway certainly, is there a difference if they go in your bin and take something out of your bin? Are they allowed to do that legally by law?
Once you place trash of a collection onto the sidewalk, it become, it's not, no longer your property. So yes, they're entitled to take that.
Okay, because my doubt, my concern is, um, is, um, uh, Mr., the President had mentioned a few minutes ago, is that, you know, people do come onto your properties. Unfortunately, it's not even during, uh, rubbish night, but they do come in to your property and take stuff. I mean, inside those bins, I don't know about anybody else, but sometimes you have old bills and things like that inside there in the recycling thing. And who knows who's going through your, I mean, I mean, I think we have to crack down on this, because I certainly don't want anybody going in my, going to my receptacle and, and looking for stuff and happening to find something that's in there that's, somebody could try to use against me or anybody else. So I certainly, you know, if we do something like this, I certainly would still entertain that these people get fined if they go on somebody's property and, and they take something out, out of a bin when it's on private property. I think they, I think they should be fined. That's just my personal opinion, but thank you.
Yeah, and that's also trespass, if they're not welcome on your property. But once you place it out on the sidewalk for collection, that's a different story.
Thank you.
Counsel Del Sol.
I just have a question. If someone, like Counsel Hanlon said, uh, Class A and Class B for a li, for a license for this, how do you know if someone says, "I want a Class B," it's thirty dollars a year? How do you know what he's going to go collect as trash? He could tell he's going to collect cans and bottles.
Absolutely.
And he comes out with aluminum in his carriage.
It would have to be defined in the statute. I'll defer to the city solicitor, but I think we'd have to be very specific in our, uh, definition of what's a Class A and what's a Class B.
Correct.
I personally just like the seventy-five dollars for everybody making fear. Because now you'd be chasing around saying, "Give me a license, I have a Class B," we'll take the aluminum out of your carriage and put it back in the, in the trash. You're only allowed to take cans and bottles. Now you'd be chasing, ISD has enough to do, they'd be chasing people taking five, five cent cans out the trash. Thank you.
Counsel Makaze.
If I may, for perfect example, Mr. Del Sol said, "Who's going to enforce it?" We just spent nine thousand in overtime, taking thirty-two hundred in fines. That math, I don't know where that came from, but it's something that, uh, doesn't make sense. So I, I, I agree, Mr. Del Sol, uh, excuse me, Counsel Del Sol also.
Any other questions for the city solicitor?
Excuse me.
Seeing none?
Who's the customer, thank you?
Thank you very much, Colleen. Any other discussion on this matter?
So we have a few things. I think the, uh, the first item to vote on would be to lay it on the table and, uh, refer the, uh, for communication over the city solicitor to try to set up a Class A, Class B and see how we can work this. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay.
Okay, so what you oppose to?
Chair is in doubt. Those folks who, who said no, could you please rise? Okay, that, the laying on the table motion has been defeated. So now...
As a matter of fact, we could be on that one too, I'm just too lazy to get up.
Okay. Okay. What, what is the, what is the pleasure of the council?
Favorable action on the amendments, as is.
Okay.
As amended in committee.
It's been moved and second to, uh, enroll it as amended. All those in fa...
Aye.
Actually, this is a roll call, because it's a...
Chair, on the, on the motion?
Counsel Hanlon.
I'd like to hear what we're doing with, what, do the amendments in order for me, so we know what that we're amending, okay?
Oh, okay. Let's see. The ones that were amended through committee?
Well, I mean, is it, that's all we're going to do, is the ones through committee?
Yeah, yes. It, it, basically, there was a motion on the floor, uh, to set it up separately so that we had a light duty or trash picker license and then a separate one for, uh, more traditional mobile truck removal companies. Uh, then we had lay it on the table, which is the first one. So the second one would be to amend it to that motion, uh, to try to amend this to incorporate a thirty dollar fee. And then the last motion that I'm aware of, I believe, is to vote on the piece as amended from the committee. Those are the three. Were there any other motions I missed?
Yeah.
Are there any other motions I missed?
Nope.
Okay, lay it on the table, that has been defeated. That's where, that's where we're at now. We had, we had, did we have a second on that motion? I believe we did. It was moved and second to incorporate language that said trash picker was thirty dollars for the fee. Okay. All those in favor?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Okay, no comes after yes. That has been defeated. So now the item that's before the council is favorable action on the piece as amended, as it came out of committee.
My second.
Clerk will call or roll.
Counsel Capone.
Standing it off, huh?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, wait a minute, for some reason. Oh, you know why this was, um, this was put in before you were president.
I'm more than happy to speak first, but that's okay.
Counsel Del Sol.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon.
Yes.
Counsel Megan.
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon.
Yes.
Counsel Makaze.
Yes, this is a seventy-five dollar, as a committee, there's no, and this is seventy-five for everybody, even the homeless people that are picking up stuff?
Yes.
Yeah.
No.
Counsel DeFolto.
Yes.
Counsel Sachata.
No.
Counsel San.
Yes.
Counsel Siminelli.
No.
Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Eight yeas, three nays, Mr. President.
Eight yeas, three nays, you have enrolled. Clerk will read the next item of business. Counsel Hanlon.
I'd like to, uh, move reconsideration on item number eleven, on item number eleven. The reason for the reconsideration is the only way that I know how to get the committee report back before us.
It's been moved and second for reconsideration, item number eleven. All those, uh... All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You have reconsidered. Item number eleven is before you. Counsel Hanlon.
Mr. Chairman, I, I, I'd like to, um, bring forth the committee meeting that, um, that we all have, I think, with this Ways and Means, February seventeen, two thousand and fifteen. And if we look at the very last paragraph, it says, "The committee voted to report that to the city council with a recommendation for favorable action on two separate orders to provide compensation package to the school committee at eleven-five a year and compensation package to the city council at nineteen thousand a year commencing with the start of the next legislation for both of those." I don't see that second order on our calendar and I just wanted to ask if anybody knows why.
Is it removed out of committee?
I believe, if I could, Mr. Chairman.
Counsel DeFolto.
I believe in committee, the, there was a discussion on whether to keep them combined or make them separate, and the, uh, the vote, the motion by the committee was to keep the two items separate.
Right.
And that's how it came out of committee. I'm not sure why that's not on the report, but that is what happened.
Right, I, I know that. But what I'm, what I'm asking is, if I may, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Why, why isn't that on the calendar?
Okay, if I, if I, if I may, I was, I was talking to the clerk. Let me just, uh, let me just make sure I understand where we're at and we'll go from there. Is the question, why was the council, um, piece not on here as well?
Right, it's not on the calendar.
Okay. What had happened is they were referred back to sponsor, so that the, the last meeting we had, the committee report, the pieces were referred back to sponsor because they weren't in the proper statutory form pursuant to the charter.
Correct.
And what happened is the sponsor submitted one, but did not submit the other. Is that accurate?
Mr. Chairman, yes. And the reason why I didn't submit it is because I'm looking into the expense account, uh, in regards to the telephone and all, all the other things. I want to do everything at once, in other words. But I don't want, pass one without the other, so I'm kind of in a dilemma how that's going to be done, and that's why I waited to put that on.
So that's accurate, though, that's why we don't, that's why there's only one piece in front of us.
Yeah, I, I, it's my piece, I did not put it on yet, it will go on.
Which is your, within your discretion.
Either next, either next meeting or the meeting after that.
Whenever, whenever you're ready.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? This is back before us. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none? Is there a second on the favorable action? It's been moved and second favorable action. Clerk call or roll.
Counsel Del Sol.
No.
No, no, this is, this is for favorable action on the piece. Let me, let me clarify this for the members, if I may. Uh, this was reconsidered, so now it is actively before you, as if you're voting on it for the first time. This is, voting favorably on this is for the eleven thousand, five hundred dollar, uh, salary structure. So yes would be for that, no would be opposed to that. Clerk call or roll.
Counsel Del Sol.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon.
Yes.
Counsel Megan.
Yes.
Counsel Makaze.
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon.
Yes.
Counsel DeFolto.
Yes.
Counsel Sachata.
Yes.
Counsel San.
Yes.
Counsel Siminelli.
No.
Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Ten yeas, one nay, Mr. President.
Ten yeas, one nay, you have enrolled. The clerk will revert back to the regular item of business. I believe it's number seven.
Make a motion to file for reconsideration on number eleven, hoping it does not prevail.
It's already been moved, Mr. President.
Once you've reconsidered.
Yeah, he already removed a consideration on it.
But we, we have...
It's done, it's all done.
Right, so you can't move again. You can't go on.
It's already been reconsidered.
We considered it.
Yeah, so it's done.
One time.
President, I think we're on item number eight.
Item number eight, resolution sponsored by Counsel Cynthia San and Counsel DeFlorio, request owner Gateway Shop Plaza, next meeting government operations, public safety and service relative to appearing private traffic details on weekends, holidays, due to continuous problems with traffic congestion in that area. The recommendation refer the matter to the mayor and director of community development to determine if the mall can add a second dairy exit onto Route sixteen near the Michael store.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Do we have any communication from the mayor of community development?
Do we have any communication? Our clerk does not. I don't know if the sponsors have anything.
Uh, was a letter sent, was this referred to community development and the mayor's office?
Yeah, I don't see any response.
Uh, well, let's refer it to, uh, community, community development in the mayor's office and, uh, I'll be in touch with, uh, Jamie Erickson.
Second motion.
To, uh, to see what we can do with, with this.
It's been moved and second to refer this item to the mayor and to the director of community development. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? You have so referred. Clerk will read the next item of business, item number nine.
Item number nine, Community and Ways and Means report in ordinance that in accordance with the provisions of Article Three, Executive Branch, Section Three, Dash One, the Everett City Charter and the position of mayor shall be as par, the salary of the position of mayor shall be as follows effective January one, twenty sixteen.
So we'll go with the council.
The salary for the position of mayor shall be one hundred and twenty-six thousand, twenty fifty-two dollars thereafter and on January first of each ensuing year. The salary for the position of mayor shall be adjusted by applying the most recently reported three year calendar year average of the unadjusted consumer price index. Said calculation shall be based on applying the aforementioned three year average of the salary in effect as of December thirty-first of the immediately preceding calendar year. All ordinance and parts of ordinance in conflict with the foregoing hereby repealed was amended in committee to strike out effective January one, twenty sixteen and replace it with the term upon the organization of city government, uh, effective upon the organization of city government, uh, in January, uh, following the municipal election of twenty fifteen.[1659.17] in January 2016, following municipal election of 2015.
Counsel Markaysi.
I, I have a problem about $40,000 increase anybody's salary in one year. We have employees in the city that don't make $40,000. And I have a hard time right now voting for this. I mean, I, we're not voting for this.
Counsel Simonelli.
Thank you, Mr. President, for you. I think the language after the $2,000, $126,000, after, there, there for all this extra language, I was wondering if someone could come up here and explain what this extra language is after the salary. From the mayor's office, uh-
You can- Counsel, I just want to make sure that I understand the, the question.
I'd really like to, to read after the $2,000, $126,552, then there's a word there, after.
Okay.
All that extra language.
Okay, the CPI, the Consumer Price Index language?
I'd like to know, how much is that gonna be extra a year?
Mr. President?
We don't know.
Can we lay this piece over until the first meeting in April, so we can look into the CPI, and so we can explain?
If that's the pleasure of the council.
I'd like to make a motion.
Second.
Lay it over to the first meeting in April, so we can have someone explain the CPI, and Counsel DeFlorio can look into it also, so she can get back to us on it.
It's been, it's been moved in second to lay this piece over to the first meeting in April, was it, Counsel?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? You have laid item number nine over to the first meeting in April. Clerk, read the next item of business. Are we at 12?
Mm-hmm.
Item number 12.
Item number 12, resolution sponsored by Counsel Cynthia Sani. Administration consider bringing the parking clerk back to city hall instead of police station for convenience of public access at request of a few citizens.
Counsel Sani.
I'd like to refer it to the mayor's office and set up a meeting to find a better location. I do have a lot of complaints stating that they like to have more visibility of the parking clerk, and she is down in the corner, in the back. So, I'd like to set up a time with the mayor himself, and this way, maybe we can come up with some kind of better location for this, a parking clerk.
So, if we had that-
Refer to the mayor's office with, I'd like to make, with a meeting-
To meet with the sponsor?
To meet with the mayor, to set up a meeting.
Right.
To find a better location.
You as a sponsor, correct?
I as the sponsor, yeah.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
It's been moved in second to refer this item to the mayor's office with the request that a meeting be set up with the sponsor. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? You have so referred. Clerk will read the next item of business, item number 13.
Item number 13, resolution sponsored by Counsel Cynthia Sani and Counsel DeFlorio. Administration consider skeleton crew at city hall on Fridays due to increase for the same.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. As you well know, all the snow that we had this year, which I know was historical, it's never happened in a hundred years. But unfortunately, when something like this happens, you're closed on a Friday, you're closed on Saturday, you're closed on Sunday, you're closed on Monday because of the storm, people can't get to work, and I understand that, and you're closed on Tuesday. That makes it four or five days that people can't get through anything. There's a lot of seniors that were actually calling and asking who they could call to shovel the kids, the list of the kids, they could have to shovel the sidewalks, and we don't have that in front of us. But anyways, I understand you can always call city services. But there are a lot of people that are complaining that city hall is closed on Friday. And I understand this is a union issue, so I certainly don't want to get anybody upset, but there could be, there could be department heads or some non-union workers that you could work something out where constituent service is, is available up here. And if you have four or five girls working in your office, or you, they could take turns. You could have a couple, or they can forward the cars to their houses, whatever. There's so many technologies today that people should be, have access to city hall. And unfortunately, when a holiday comes, city hall is closed on a Monday, and it's closed on a Friday. You're only doing business Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. That's three days. And there's a lot of holidays on a Monday, so, like I said, I don't want to go against the union workers, I understand it's in their contract, so I want to make that very clear. I understand it's in the contract, and I don't want to disrupt anything, so.
Counsel Simonelli.
Thank you, Mr. President, for you, to your sponsor. I, I don't believe we should be starting again another job for here, even on Friday, but still, the people know what's gonna happen for two years now. They see big signs, closed on Friday, in fact, there's two right out in the main entrance of this building. So, and it's on the TV, and it's everywhere. They don't know by now, I don't think they have a guy sit down there and just say, ah, you know, it doesn't, to me, doesn't sound like that we need it, so. I don't really think, this doesn't, this doesn't need another person doing this job, which it, it doesn't need to have. So I'd be against this, and unless we can cheat it, maybe some way to have, have Fridays eight to four, maybe, you know, we can get into the committee there and forward it to Fridays open eight to 12, I mean, eight to 12 on Fridays. Otherwise, I don't think it's, it's just a waste of time having someone down there just, you know, we're closed, yeah, yeah, okay. If they want to make inquiries, they go to the mayor, they call the mayor's office, tell them, you know, telephone, you know.
Counsel Markaysi.
You gotta record it, no, you get a recorded message.
You know, I also, I believe, I believe that, I'll say we're government, we're here for the service industry, and we should be providing services. Like I said, no Fridays, Mondays off, I mean, you, you can't beat that, that's a great thing if you can get it. But I don't know if there's a kiosk that's out there, that maybe have some basic services where people, we could make it like an ATM machine, where people come in and do basic things, where they're paying, or saying, at 163 Elm Street, I'm putting in a, a new door, this, that, that, they can't pull a permit, but at least they can come in on Mondays, and maybe the department can press a button, see, you know, where should I go to inspect it? You know, just informational things, if you have to pay something, if you look at bills, parking things, maybe there's a kiosk that's out there that could provide this, if we're not going to put people in here. But department heads are salaried people, they're not, you know, Florida employees. So I mean, if it's, to come in for two or three of them every other week, especially when there's a holiday on Monday, I think that wouldn't be that, out of, asking too much, it'd be inappropriate.
Counsel Sani.
Thank you. On this piece, I also got calls regarding parking, that they went to go get a parking pass, and it was closed, and they referred to go to the police station, and when they got to the police station, they told them to go to city hall, and it was closed. And it was, you know, a few people, and a skeleton crew is not saying everybody has to come to work. You put certain people in a certain area, and you work a, a crew that's, you know, less. I did speak to Counsel, Counsel, Mayor's Chief of Staff, and she did say that they did have a union, you know, they have to look into and stuff, and they did think, you know, Friday was something they would like to look into also, but they couldn't, you know, definitely say anything about it because it is a union issue. So, I think it's something they can look into and let us know, something they can work with. So, it's much needed in the city, I believe.
Counsel Mangan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have to disagree with some of my previous speakers. I, I just think that, I know on Mondays, we have a lot of holidays, as Counsel DeFlorio said, but that's why we open up late on Tuesday nights, and it's all open, it's open extra hours on Tuesday nights for people, if there's issues like that. I understand snow things, and, you know, that's an unusual occurrence, but as Counsel Sani did say, it is a big union thing, because I would think most people would be coming here to pay a bill or a ticket or something like that, and that, that's, that gets into the whole thing with union, opens up new union negotiations again, which means a lot more money and certain things, and whether it's a skeleton crew or not, it's gonna, I think, open up a big can of worms. I know, not for a lot of the seniors, but for a lot of the people now, and people doing business, a lot of people do, you can get your tickets, everything's done over the internet. I know my, my, my parking tickets, and, I mean, my tickets, stickers for the pa, for the car, that's all done online, everything comes in the mail. So there's a lot of, most of the stuff you can do, a lot of stuff you can do online now that you couldn't do before, so I just think to get into the whole, with the unions and negotiate that whole thing, I think just open up a big can of worms, so I would be against that. Thank you.
Counsel DeFlorio.
I understand the issue, and I certainly don't want to open up a whole can of worms with the unions, and I never said for the union workers to come and work, okay? There, there's a lot of seniors that don't have computers, and they don't do everything online. So you know what my recommendation is gonna be from now on? Any senior that's out there, call your counselor, and they will do the job for you. Call them up, they'll pick up your ticket, they'll come and pay you. Not everybody does everything online. I mean, you know, you, you want seniors to have internet, you want to have a fixed income. People can't afford this anymore. So, they used to come and up city hall, paying their bill, they feel more comfortable, they feel more secure. So, people feel more secure coming to city hall and actually paying their bill, even if there's a person in the back door, and they hand them that bill. It doesn't have to be the collector's office, it has to be open, but they hand them that envelope to say they feel secure. That, that's all it is, it's more security. And like I said, this, I mean, this year, I understand was a hundred years, but we all, we're gonna have snowstorms, you're gonna have problems with city halls closed. So, I understand they're open on Tuesday nights, I understand they're open on Thursday nights, but there are a lot of holidays on a Monday. And especially, like I said, during that snowstorm, you can forward calls, you can, there's so much you can do today with the technology today. I, and I like the idea of Counsel Markaysi, putting, I said that before, put a machine there to, to get, to do things, but at the same time, like I said, the senior citizens feel more comfortable coming in and getting, handing them the bill. They don't feel comfortable doing things on a machine. So that, that's important. But I certainly don't want the union workers to start negotiating to open again on a Friday. There's gonna be another way to do it.
What's the pleasure of the council? Counsel Hailey.
Mister, Mister Chairman, Rose was saying about a machine, and I, I think we have a machine, it's in the parking lot. If I'm not mistaken, you can use that to put a bill in, and they will open it up Monday, I'm not sure if that's-
Paying cash.
Or they can pay by MasterCard, is that what it is? Yeah, they can use a MasterCard there, or any kind of a card, and they can pay their bill at that station, it's right, right on the, no? Could I have Mr. Biscay before us, please?
Yeah, the, the clerk informs me that it's a Dropbox, I guess.
With a drop-off? Just a drop-off?
Yeah.
Just a drop-off?
Yeah.
Well, then that would be okay, too, you know, but I'm kind of listening to everybody here, and I'm kind of agreeing now with the, a skeleton crew, but I, I think we only need a skeleton crew of one. And that person would sit where the greeter sits now, and just to either, either collect something, to give to a department on Tuesday, or Monday, whatever comes up, or to refer them to a telephone number, this is where you call somebody for rubbish removal, this is where you call someone for a dead animal in the street, or whatever. So, just a referral, and you know, after a while, that one person will become very knowledgeable about everything that's done in the, in the, in the city, and they would be able, very easily do that. You could even, you know, they have these, these programs where they allow some seniors to get so much off their taxes if they volunteer some time, and that would be a good place for someone to do it, you know? An able-bodied semen, yeah, semen, senior, that could, yeah, Peter, Peter, an able-bodied senior could do that. And so, you know, it, it requires some thought on this thing, and it's not something that we should just, I don't think we should just vote and forget it, or vote and pass it, because I think it requires a little bit more, more thought on it, so.
And these are all valid points.
Yeah, I'd like to, and I've got a valid point, but I'd like to put it all together, I'd like to refer it to a committee, and I don't care which one it goes to.
Can you send a motion to the mayor's office?
Counsel Apolitano.
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree with Counsel Hailey, there's more involved in this, okay? I mean, as much as I think, I think that there is convenience of being open on Friday, whether you have one person sitting down in the front in the lobby, or you've got every office here open, it costs just as much money to keep city hall open on Friday for overhead, okay? Lights, heat, security, you can't have one person sitting at the front desk there who's gonna somehow keep people from going upstairs into offices that are, that are normally closed.
That's right.
So I mean, there's a lot more involved in it. I think it's a great idea, because I agree. Seniors need to be able to get in there, and it's, and we can't always push them to our timetable, okay? But there's a little more to it, you know, there's gotta be some other means of communication, snow removal, things of that nature, you know, you know, that's a good point. You know, one of the questions that came up in the committee meeting with, with the code enforcement, was that the list of people, of kids to allow to be able to shovel. Well, if that's being coordinated through, coordinated through the mayor's office, but the mayor's office is closed on Friday, Saturday, Sunday, list is no good.
Sure.
Okay? But there's gotta be more involved to this. This is, this is not a quick fix, this is not a quick decision. I, I supported sending the committee, more dialogue, the needs, we need to discuss and expand this out a little bit further. What does it actually cost to maintain city hall open on a Friday? I'm not against it.
Sure.
But I want to know what those figures are.
Sure.
Because I think too often, we're just arbitrarily passing things, and then we're trying to figure out how to pay, pay for them later. We need to get, we need to get all that information up front.
Okay, just, just if I may from the chair, just to make sure that everybody's clear, to send the piece to the committee, if you wanted to flesh it out a little bit more, to get a little bit more information, to better phrase your questions to the mayor, would be the purpose of the committee, because this falls under the umbrella of the executive office. So this is really within the mayor's discretion. So, if the pleasure of the council is to discuss this a little bit further in committee, flesh out questions that we would like the mayor to discuss or get back to us on, that would be one thing. But if we're looking to actually have the mayor implement this, then it would simply be referring it to the mayor's office, because it's in his discretion. But it's up to the council, however you, you want to do that. I just wanted to, to put it out there.
Why, why, excuse me.